20/2C9, so Appointment, Employment, Compensation, Discipline, Performance or Dismissal of Specific Employees of a Public Body or Legal Council. 5ILCS 120/2C1. Collective Negotiation Matters. Litigation. 5ILCS 120/2C11.
Uh, someone's second.
Ms. Medina, please close the room.
Mr. Alexander.
Aye.
Mr. Grant?
Aye.
Ms. McCallum?
Aye.
Ms. Patterson? Mr. Van Deers? Mr. Reiner?
Aye.
President Kelly?
Aye.
Mr. Tarjent?
May I have a motion to reconvene the regular meeting of the Proviso Township High School Board of Education?
A moment.
Ms. Lindina, please call the roll.
Mr. Alexander.
Aye.
Ms. Grant.
Aye.
Lindina.
Aye.
Ms. Patterson.
Aye.
Mr. Voltaire.
Aye.
Mr. Wagner.
Aye.
Ms. Taylor.
Aye.
Your call.
We are reconvening at 7:43 PM. Please stand for a moment of silence and the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
It is now time for student and staff recognition. Dr. Harden.
You hear that ringing?
It's just a bell.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Good evening. Madam President, Superintendent, tonight we wanted to take a moment and honor a group of people who serve us daily. And we know the special service that they provide to us at Proviso East High School and no doubt across the district, but certainly at Proviso East High School. And so tonight we wanted to take a moment and honor a group that maybe doesn't get enough recognition. So we wanted to thank and recognize the Proviso East security officers and staff. Thank you, Proviso East Security, Mr. Mobley, floor leaders. You secure the property. You ensure that Proviso East and all of its occupants remain safe and undisturbed. You keep a close eye on anyone who tries to enter our grounds and you courageously respond with no regard for self on those rare occasions when we deem an individual to be suspicious. You provide supervision for our school's activities, both inside and outside. You carefully monitor security cameras. You walk around constantly and you examine the many sections and buildings and corridors and entrances. And you follow these routines over and over again without anyone taking notice. You interact with our guests. You ensure that people are who they say they are by examining the documentation that they present. You make sure that people have access to bathrooms and elevators and any other resource that we at Proviso East can provide. You take care of our faculty and staff. You intervene in incidents. You respond to their calls for assistance. You secure the perimeter. You respond to the constant barking of orders from all who think you should just do what they say. What is... Most of what you do for them goes unseen and unheard. I hear the radio calls and those radio calls are never to come and meet and honor students. You meet our students at some of their toughest times, but you do it nonetheless. And so I end by saying you take care of our students. We see how hard you are working to build relationships with students, not just provide security. It's not easy and it's not always successful, yet you try. You take care of them when they are sick and when they are injured and no one notices. You find support for them when they are crying and when they are angry and we often don't see it. Most of all, you are patient with them. Most often you are interacting with them during some of their toughest moments and you guide them through it, even when they tell you in so many words, "I don't need your help." Yet you stay the course. Tonight we thank you for your service to Proviso East's faculty, staff, and students. And we hope that this small recognition serves as a reminder that we understand how important you are to us, to our current work and to our vision for the future. And so we say thank you. Let's welcome... Mr. Kevin Holmes. Peaches Barker. Peaches Barker. Donald Boyce. Cleophas Donaldson. Mary Douglas. Christopher Fouqua. Kevin Holmes. Carl Houston. Darian Johnson. Elizabeth Manzo. Ricky McCoy. Darrell Palmer. DeAndre Peyton. I will keep with our tradition at Proviso East, he does not have a last name. We know him as Frank. Angelica Rodriguez. Billy Russell. Charles Thompson. Daphne Walker. Marion White. Alchira Woodard. Of course, they always say, and you heard it in the movie Remember the Titans, "Attitude reflects leadership." And so we honor, last but not least, the best security director in Proviso Township, Mr. Donald Mobley. Half of y'all will come on that side behind or something, so...
All right, you guys ready?
Smile.
Ready? All right, one more. All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening, Board.
Good evening, Director.
When you think about being Proviso proud, hashtag Proviso proud, tonight I am honored to honor some phenomenal people in Proviso, and half of those people just so happen to be Proviso graduates. Our first honoree is Dina Donald, who is new to the HR team, and she is working to transform this department. And it's such an amazing young lady and a Proviso West graduate, Dina Donald. Hey, girl. The next person really keeps me in line and helps me get all of these board reports done in a timely manner. And now, working in the Office of Human Resources, it really feels like a family with the addition of Tiffany Jenkins. T.J. Dr. Rodriguez had a vision to livestream these meetings. I didn't know who to ask to help me with this project. The next person, Jeff Labor, the man behind the cameras makes this happen for us, and is such a phenomenal person. Never complains, always here. I always say, "Jeff, come a little late the next day." He never does that. He's like, "No, I'll be back at 7 o'clock. Come on down, Jeff." The next person, my BFF. There are leaders that are behind the scenes, and they don't always like all of this public attention. And that's the sign of a true hero, no matter what we've given her, whether it was website development, giving teachers one-on-one devices, and arranging that professional development. She has taken on the challenge of transforming the Technology Department, Tracy Avant-Bay. Tonight, she couldn't be with us, but I would like to honor Heather Michelle, who's also a new addition to the Office of Human Resources. Let's just give her a round of applause. And last but not least, when I was new to Human Resources, Michelle Edwards and I started at the same time, and she has worked right along with me learning the functions of Human Resources, and I'm proud to have her as a team member. Can we please welcome Michelle Edwards? I don't have a certificate for this person, but I would be remiss if I didn't honor Bill Gleason, who was the most amazing attorney ever. Mr. Gleason helped me learn my job. I was like calling the office every single day. They knew my name. I haven't called Bill in a while, and I feel confident because of you, Bill, and I thank you for that. You are truly the best. And that is from Human Resources. Never knew HR could be so happy, right? Absolutely. I love a follow-up.
How was yours?
Yeah, show of heart.
There we go.
There you go. Thank you.
Thank you.
At this time, the Board of Education opens a floor for citizen comments. Each citizen comment will be three minutes. The Board of Education recognizes Dinar Way.
Good evening.
Good evening.
I'm here to be brief. That was before you all, maybe two months ago. I'm waiting for a response still from the superintendent and the attorneys pertaining to the exposure process. Exposure process needs to be changed. It's disenfranchising our young black males, which is an issue with me. I've had an ongoing case since 2009 with the board. This is not new. It may be new for the majority of the board members with deception amount of president who was there during that time, looking to be resolution-oriented, as I said before. My request was simply to give you a 15-minute presentation on the facts and the data that I had that pertain to my son, where he was falsified. There was falsified evidence that led to an exposure that was turned over, returned. And what the issue is, is that you have these employees that are still on the payroll. The issue also is that the system is still in place. There was change. Again, it's disenfranchising people in order to protect their children. What I received far as the data that was part of Senate Bill 100, this was part of the quantitative data that moved forward to changing throughout the state because of the abuse in this district, this state, and this was ground zero at the time of 2008, 2009, 2010, where exposures were going rampant and unnecessary. Again, I needed, I would like to know an explanation as why. I have not received any feedback. And again, my fourth step is just simple. 15-minute presentation so you can see the data and what took place with your employees too. You want to hold those, change the system back to its original state before it was changed out so that the parents have the right to come before you with an appeal versus having to go to the county board or the county courts, which is costs families cannot afford. All right? I did not receive any discovery there. Number three, the individuals that were involved with this, they need to be held accountable. They need to be held accountable. And number four is to make all whole. Make everyone whole in this process this year. Now, I know some get caught up over the basis of, they're thinking that things are about money. It's not about money. All right? We're talking about integrity. And this, what I'm describing, took place with the other board before you all came here. So the scenario that you have is a bag that stinks. I got the proof to show you there's something that stinks. We have the answers to correct it. So it's an integrity check on you all to figure out, are you going to do the right thing far as change this out? Or we're going to keep moving this system that's hurtful and disenfranchising you? I'm here for conversation. I'm open for dialogue, suggestions, ideas. I want to be part of the process to make it right, not to be the one that's here that's discomplaining. I have an interest here. I'm alumni. I walk these same hallways. I'm still here in the community working, and I see firsthand the damage of people not being, or youngsters not being in school and being pushed out. Now, if someone deserves an exposure, you need to have the appropriate steps or appropriate incident that takes place. All right? The school is a supplement to the home. I don't count for the school to raise my kids. It's a supplement to the home. And yes, the families have a responsibility too, but so is everybody's effort. So, I'm looking for an explanation from the superintendent, who did call along with the attorney, but I did not receive any feedback. At this point, we're supposed to give word from the board, if I'm going to have the opportunity, to go in executive session to show you the data. Questions? All right, not close.
Thank you, Mr. Way. Someone will get back to you. The Board of Education recognizes Donald Robinson.
Good evening, Madam President and the Board. Thank you for allowing me to come before you. I think the reason why I came here, I think it's been addressed, but I came here for the reason of Proviso High School District 209 Girls Track and Field Team, who have been doing incredibly well over the past three or four years and are for sure, barring any injury or so, will be going to the state track and field championship. And so with that being said, my daughter, who attends Proviso Math and Science Academy, is a student athlete, and soon to be going off to college with scholarships, both in academics and athletics. And so, we were concerned about the graduation date being on the same date as the state high school track and field championships. But it's my understanding that Dr. Rodriguez is working to address that. It appears that we have a date for May 20th. So, I wanted to just say to you, Dr. Rodriguez, and the Board, thank you for taking the time to consider our concern and for taking action to address it. I think it's going to be great for the culture of Proviso Township, sticking with the theme, "One Proviso, One Goal, One Team." Okay? Thank you so much. Thank you, sir.
Thank you. The Board of Education recognizes Jeremy Horn.
Good evening, Board members.
Good evening, Jeremy.
Okay, my name is Jeremy Horn. I am a graduate of Proviso East High School, 2003. My citizen's comment that I want to discuss about that ever since the election of you guys being on board, I've seen some major progressive changes in the Proviso Township community. And I'd like to list some highlights so you all can give yourselves a round of applause. The back-to-school event at PMSA in August was a good turnout. I mean, just seeing all the township residents coming together to support our children. So that was a huge, huge offer. I also want to commend the Proviso West Homecoming Parade. First time in 10 years that Proviso West had a homecoming parade, which was a good, good success and a good turnout. I also want to compliment on the Proviso East Homecoming Parade, which was 10 times better than last year's homecoming parade. Seeing all the residents, not only in Maywood, but all the residents in the Proviso Township come to support our children. And also, I want to commend you guys for having more Friday night football games, because when I was in high school, that was our culture and our tradition that we had Friday night football games. And to see that, it was very, very refreshing that, man, that my culture is finally coming back to my high school alma mater. I also want to commend Dr. Nia Abdullah, who is not here right now, for the greet at Westchester Public Library. It was a good turnout to rebrand Proviso West High School. I also want to compliment on the Part One of the Faculty Master Plan Meeting that I attended at PMSA, which was a good turnout that the architect named Will Perkins, and Will, that is really trying to renovate the high schools of Proviso East and Proviso West. And I'm hoping that the residents of the Proviso Township come to the next meeting, Part Two, on January 23rd, 2018, at Proviso West. And I want to compliment you, Mr. Rodney Alexander, on the parent and community engagement committee meeting that took place at Proviso West. It was a good turnout seeing all the residents come. And I think this is a wonderful opportunity for all the parents to support our children and to move ahead. So, that's all I need to say. And most of all, thank you all for your prayers and your concerns. I'm the pastor of my mom, and I really appreciate it from the bottom of my heart. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Jeremy. It's certainly great to hear something good. If you let us know that Proviso is rising. Thank you. The Board of Education recognizes Talia Robinson.
Hi, I'm Talia Robinson. My father just previously spoke. I just wanted to thank you all for considering my concern regarding the state track meet and graduation meeting on the same day. I am very happy that I am now able to be awarded for the academic and athletic work I have done from since freshman year. So I just wanted to thank you all for that.
Thank you.
Now, go ahead and bring the trophy back.
Oh, she will. She's unreal.
The Board of Education recognizes Tawanna Robinson.
Good evening. I just want to thank you. I think enough Robinsons have spoke tonight. Just thank you for addressing our concerns and responding to our email. We really appreciate it. Thank you on behalf of the district and Proviso West, Proviso East, and PMSA. It affects all three schools. So, we're just happy that these girls will have an opportunity to go to graduation and attend. attend the meeting. Thank you.
Thank you. The Board of Education recognizes Dennis Robinson. The twin, the twin.
Thank you, thank you. First of all, I apologize if I wasn't dressed for the occasion. Just came back from Proviso West where I coached this Carolina Zephyrs. So as a concerned citizen, I came out here to protest really the fact that the graduation was scheduled on the same day as the state track meet. Well, there's no need to do that now. One of the things I will say is many of you may not know this, but several of the students, both at Proviso East and Proviso West, participate as part of the Chicago Man Zephyrs Track Club. And several of those students who are seniors at Proviso West achieved great goals this year. And one of those goals were they became All-Americans during the USATF National Track and Field Competition. So it is without... If they deserve a hand of applause, it is without doubt in my mind, you know, barring any major injuries, that these young ladies will be at the state finals and they will represent this community in the brightest and greatest light. So again, thank you for your consideration and we really appreciate it. And support all of our student athletes who work hard and dedicate many hours studying and preparing and achieving the goals they set for themselves. Thank you so much.
The Board of Education recognizes Victor DeBose.
Good evening, board and everyone else. I'm the head girl's track coach supervisor at West. And I'm really thankful for you all's decision. And my girls, they're going to be thankful the ones who's not here. It's just making me feel so wonderful because we had girls making decisions on that about state and graduation. And I'm just so happy inside. And my girls, we will make the state finals and we will bring back something. I believe that. Thank you very much.
The Board of Education recognizes Sandra Wright.
Good afternoon, everyone.
Good evening.
I'm a proud parent of Zakaria Fisher-Porte. And she's in the process of with the issue dealing with graduation and state track finals being on the same date. And it's my understanding that the issue has been resolved and I came to speak out on their behalf of my daughter and the students. And I would like to say thank you for considering changing the date so that all the hard work that they've done, they'll be able to go to state finals and hopefully barring any injuries, they'll bring back a trophy and some medals. And also my daughter is going for an education scholarship as well. Thank you.
Let's introduce our public comments. President's report.
President, you.
Is there a question? I just want to say thank you to the Robinson family for reaching out, for your professionalism, and for providing ideas to issues that we have as a school district. Board of Education, this family has been incredible. I was most impressed by the fact that they provided ideas to issues that we had. And it was an issue. It was a real issue. So, and they were very student centered. And we worked as a team. And we probably didn't agree at the beginning because we didn't understand one another. But we came into a tentative agreement. And I do have a preliminary. It's not completely done, but I'm very sure that it's going to be able to happen. So I thank you, Mr. Robinson, Ms. Robinson, you know, for your professionalism and for providing ideas, because it is through ideas and through citizens like you that we're going to take Proviso to a better place. Thank you, thank you, thank you. President's report. It seems like yesterday that we were, we were beginning the new school year. Believe it or not, we are at the end of a semester, the end of the calendar year 2017. And we are about to begin a new calendar year 2018. We have had a busy year to date. However, we have so much more to do. We will work hard to complete tasks in 2018 to continue to make Proviso nothing but the best. We ask the students, the administration, the faculty, the staff, and the community to continue to help us to improve and to grow in 2018. We must congratulate our schools on so much hard work. Just this month, the athletic office at Proviso, excuse me, just this month alone, we Proviso East had a successful National Honor Society Breakfast with Santa servicing the community. Congratulations to Proviso West on a successful and well attended NJROTC Annual Military Inspection and grand opening of Panther Parent Cafe. And congratulations to the over 60 students who were honored at PMSA in their National Honor Society Induction Ceremony. Please join us as the district in celebrating the Proviso West 57th Annual Holiday Tournament, one of the oldest and the best holiday tournaments in the state. Please contact the athletic office at Proviso West for information. Tonight begins the celebration of Hanukkah for our Jewish brothers and sisters. And approximately two weeks from now, those of us of Christian faith will celebrate Christmas. On behalf of the Proviso Township District 209 Board of Education, no matter what your beliefs or your celebrations, we wish you a season of gladness, a season of cheer, and to top it off, a wonderful new year. When you chose, when you choose joy, you feel good. And when you feel good, you do good. And when you do good, it reminds others of what joy feels like. And it just might inspire others to do the same. Happy holidays. Superintendent's report.
Thank you, President Kelly. Try to do the superintendent's report from here. Is this a good place?
I think so.
So we do have a brief presentation to the public, the community, to the Board of Education about the work that we have done, where we're going. And great organizations always come back to their core values, their core beliefs, their vision. And most importantly, they show results. It's not good enough to say, I'm going to do. Action behind whatever we say we're going to do needs to be provided to the community and to the Board of Education. And I join this community with that idea, with a resource driven approach where, you know, where we're going to be driven by action, results. We're going to employ our heart. We're going to have a commitment to Proviso, our strategic planning ahead, but most importantly, our hands. So today, you know, I do have a very brief presentation for you to talk about some of the work that we have done this past year. We have our three great schools in Proviso, Proviso East, Proviso West, Proviso Math and Science. We adopted a vision. We believe that two expectations of excellence. Excellence is important to us. And by providing equitable educational opportunities to empower each student, our graduates will be prepared for college careers to serve as contributing members of a dynamic global society. Athletics is important. Academics is important. And, you know, bringing us together around this vision is something that, that the administration, the board, and the community has rallied, rallied behind. So again, we do have a vision. We also have a, 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 a vision. We have core beliefs. We have guiding principles. So we're continuing on. We had meetings with our community. This is last year. Last year, I believe this was Forest Park. I look like maybe 10 years younger than right now. But that's okay, at least. But I am very happy that Proviso became the school district of choice and the best out of this partnership. Because we reached out to the community and we, and through a, through a entry plan, we developed strategic objectives, strategic initiatives. This past week, we had a meeting with a community based organizations, as you can see here on the screen, and this idea of one Proviso, faith based organizations as well. We had a beautiful meeting where we reported back our, our work so far. So again, it's not good enough to say you're going to do it. Show me the money. Show me that you're really doing it. And that is what I bring to Proviso in collaboration with the administration, in collaboration with the board, and, and the promise to this community. This is a very important community. So again, this happened this week, I mean, last week. This week, we are bringing in elected officials and we're bringing in the school board members. And I think there's some, you know, majors that are coming. It's going to be very fun. And, and you can rest assured that we're going to continue to have a student centered approach in our conversations with everybody when we talk about Proviso. So, so I want to say thanks to board members that participated in these events. President Kelly was there. Rodney Alexander was there. Many other board members wanted to be there. They're coming to the one this week. So again, Board of Education, thank you for your commitment. Thank you for participating. And thank you for supporting the vision and the mission of our school district. We also have parent engagement activities. So, and it's starting to become really good. So we had a meeting at Proviso West where Mr. Alexander probably had 10 individuals. And then this past one, he had about 20. So it is increasing. So this idea of parent engagement is one idea that, that we embrace. And I think the work that you're doing, Mr. Alexander, you know, on behalf of the Board of Education is commendable and it's something that we need to continue to push. Because it is with parents that we're going to make a true change in our district. So, uh, uh, parents are important. We also have excellence. So we have Dr. Harding, we have, uh, uh, Bellas, you know, PMSA and our students and our board, because we do promote, sorry about that, we do promote equity empowerment and excellence. So again, excellence is something that we continue to, to, you know, to push because we believe that our students can perform at a very high level. So we have an example of that. So with that, we have this one paper that we created. So I want to say thanks particularly to Mrs. Moreno and Mr. Wagner for giving this idea about, you know, can we show what we have done in something that is very simple? Dr. Rodriguez, you talk too much. Mr. Wagner told me that. You, I want to see it. I want to see the numbers. And we, we, we made this one paper in collaboration with the board. I sent it to the board as well. And we have our students, we have our principals, we have our Board of Education. Our students are saying in math and science, I am Proviso proud because I am supported by my peers to strive for excellence. And I am so, Proviso East, I am Proviso proud because I have people of every walk of life to present my gratitude to. That could only mean that I am part of the planting a seed with the generous offers from the community and staff. We have Luigi from Proviso West. I am Proviso proud because of my hard work and dedication and my peers, teachers, staff, administrator is what makes Proviso nothing but the best. Those are our students talking about our schools. We also had a student today here. And we also have families. And we have our principals, Dr. Carbelas, good to great, you know, Jim Collins, 2001, research base, rise up and be transformed. Transformation defined as going from A to B where B no longer looks like A. That's directly from Dr. Harding. And Nia Abdullah, our principal at West, believe, commit, and achieve. So our three leaders have plans. They have a vision. They know where they're going. And I support your efforts. And I, and I want to say thank you, principals, for your hard work. I do know what it is to be a principal. I was a principal. And you do a lot of work for our students and you are in the middle of all of us. See, when you're a principal, you got a teacher, you got a student, and then you have the Board of Education, you have the superintendent, and you're in the middle. And it's very hard. And you got to make everybody happy. And, and that is the work of the principal. And our principals do a great, a wonderful job with that in making our schools the best schools anywhere, safe places for learning. And most importantly, they have a plan on how to transform their buildings. That's the piece that I like the most. It's not us directing them. It's us working together as a team. So thank you, Dr. Carbelas, Dr. Harding, and also Mr. Cusina representing Proviso West. And we have direction from the Board of Education. We have high expectations from our board. And we have board educations that are very, very involved, you know, and it is in a positive way in making us a better school district. So I just want to say to the board, thank you for the challenge. Thank you for putting pressure. If it is needed, we are going to perform. So thank you, thank you, thank you for setting direction in our district. Last but not least, we have the numbers that show what we have done. So oftentimes, people will come with ideas and, and things are not backed up by numbers. We have 1.4 that we reallocated to support the standard of care. We reallocated $2.5 million to support strategic initiatives. This is all existing dollars, high impact, low cost. That is the idea. We adopted a mission, mission and core beliefs and goals. We improved in seven out of seven academic indicators. We improved in seven out of seven academic indicators. And that is the hard work of our school leaders, everybody coming together from the Board of Education, to the administration, to the teachers, you know, to our students, that community. I believe, I know that we will make it happen in Proviso. We also have a financial recognition, 3.9 out of, out of, out of four. Freshmen on track went up 73% from 64. So again, you do have, and we do have some good leading indicators showing that the district is in a positive trajectory. And it is up to us to continue with our work. It is up to us, to us to scare up and take it to the next level. And that is the commitment that the administration has for the community and for the Board of Education. And we will show it with numbers, not with words. Numbers are life. And we're going to show with numbers that our school district will continue to move forward because we have that commitment from the board floor all the way to the classroom. So, so I just want to say, you know, a close thank you to this wonderful team that represents, you know, many areas. Board members representing constituents, representing the community, and administration representing the three different schools, also our central services. Because together, we can make Proviso, and we will make Proviso the best school district anywhere. We can do this. We will do this. And I just want to say in closing, thank you, thank you, thank you for receiving, for accepting, for working with me, with the administration, and, and, and we are ready to continue to work hard. We're not scared. We're going to work hard. We're going to listen. We work on ideas because Proviso will be nothing but the best. Thank you.
Good evening again, board.
Good evening, good evening.
The Office of Human Resources, just as an information item, is conducting a comprehensive salary analysis on administrative and special payroll salaries. As part of the analysis, we are comparing our administrative and special payroll salaries to 19 school districts. And we've previously used those same 19 districts for other salary comparisons with other groups. And that's, that's it from Human Resources. At this time, I'm going to... At this time, I'm going to call Ms. Tracy Avant-Beaup to talk about the change to the request, to the website redesign and rebranding request for proposal.
When will that be completed?
That will be completed, information will be coming back to the board in February. Any other questions regarding that? Okay, thank you.
Thank you, the Colonel.
Thank you.
Good evening, board.
Good evening.
In your documentation, you see that we are asking that we cancel the previously released RFP, because we would like the opportunity to do our due diligence. With the first bid, we only received three responses, and we did not believe that that was a good representation of the services that are available. So we wanted to get your blessing to cancel that and re-release it. And then also, there's an act, I'm sorry, an information item letting you know that we are going to release an RFP for the audiovisual upgrades for each of the schools. Are there any questions?
Madam President. And I read through this, are there specific, is this a cost issue, or are there quality issues that were involved with this, or what was the rationale with the request to not take the last?
It was a cost issue, the differences between the three vendors, while they graded similarly on the rubric that we had, their costs were vastly different. And again, we also wanted to, we've contacted some other vendors that are interested in applying and thinking that we want to have the skills specific for the things that we're looking for.
Thank you.
No.
Thank you.
I have a joke. I'm not going to make a joke. We're not changing the pirate, right, David?
No. Not touching the pirate.
Holy cow, you'll be there.
I have a question.
Oh, okay, yes, sir, I'm sorry.
So you did say that you're looking for, the bids were not the same in a way that maybe they have different qualifications?
Yes.
So are you guys sending out an RFP first, or are you sending a request for qualifications before you send an RFP?
Well, no, it wasn't qualifications in that way, it's just that each of the software, each of the vendors had a software that did different things. And so we wanted to, we just want to make sure that we have the software that fits in our environment.
Okay, so it wasn't about the qualification?
Right, not the individual qualifications.
Yeah, we met about this, and a new timeline has been established, and I want to say, if I remember correctly, February is our...
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Finance, Mr. Grayford?
Hi.
Good evening, Madam President, Board of Education. I will be very brief. You have the year-to-date report and the grant report. You may notice that we have no revenue yet for 18 in grants, that is because we cannot submit any information, because the state has not opened its reporting website to allow for receiving information for grants. So we continually expend, and hopefully, we will soon be able to start submitting, and they will start receiving and sending us grant funds. Year-to-date report, revenue is coming in as anticipated and within, you know, what we expect. Expenditures, albeit in this month run a bit behind, we'd like to be spending a little bit more. But you will see on your bill list, you have a sizable list for December. That list represents about 11% of your budget year-to-date. So things caught up, I mean, we get through, it takes a while, once we get, you know, things purchased, invoices come through, everything gets checked, and so that's why you'll have a large bill list in December, and that'll start getting us closer to where we want to be, because we are at the half of the, we will be at half the year mark at the end of this month, and so we want to see that going on. You also have, again, as we discussed last month, and in the two finance committee meetings in the last couple of months, actually, the last three finance committee meetings, two resolutions, one to repay working cash bonds. In the resolution, it does several things, it moves $9 million from the education fund and $1 million from the ONM fund to the debt service to repay the bonds that are outstanding, that's one resolution. And then a second resolution is to borrow for working cash funds for capital purposes, $10 million. And as we've stated before, this sale and purchase allows the district to, and then put the funds into for capital for reserve, but also lowers the interest rate of what we have outstanding, that has potential $2 million in savings from the old interest rate to the new interest rate that could be either reduction in taxes, or as necessary, because it is part of the debt service extension base that the district can borrow, allows for greater borrowing authority from the district later on, if it so chooses. I should also add that in part of that process, we had a rating call, which is part of what you do in a bond issuance with Standard and Poor's, a week ago, two weeks ago, we got our rating last week, and Standard and Poor's upheld the district's A rating with a stable outlook. They're all very positive comments and statements. The one piece, there's a couple of issues and factors, some things that we'll bring to the policy committee in a couple of months about putting some policies in place that rating agencies like to see, specifically putting into written form what our understanding as of what fund balance we should have. That's one thing they always like to see, but they are also well aware of our capital issues, and the one piece that they have said is, the next rating to go up, you know, is to have an understanding of our capital needs, and a district plan as to how to work to handle that. But other than that, they believe that we have an opportunity with those issues to move up again. So that was very positive. Other than that, I will, that is all I have in my report.
I have a question. In regards to the Title I funds?
Yes.
Because we have a heavy reliance on them.
Yes.
With all the actions that are currently happening, what is the likelihood of those funds perhaps not continuing?
Title I is not, to my understanding and my knowledge and what I've seen and heard, Title I has not been an area of focus of reduction on the federal side. Now, Title II, though we have this year's budget allotment, and it has been budgeted by the, you know, through the federal system, initially, when a budget was presented by the current administration, the professional development area of funds, which is specifically Title II, was removed from their budget. So the impact is to, the concern is to Title II, but I don't believe there's been much action or direction either way on any of that, you know, from the administration, they seem to be continuing with resolutions and going forward. So I don't know, I'm not saying that it has had any call saying, call your congressman, call your senator, you know, that these are endangered, but I don't think that anything has been worked on or worked out yet.
As it relates to finance, I just want to say, you know, thanks to Mr. Grayford. I mean, you don't hear this enough, I mean, I'm always pushing for more and more and more. And also, thanks to Ms. Grant for the finance committee. This opportunity to do the refinancing offers a great opportunity for the district. Those $10 million, I'll say it again, will be restricted dollars for capital improvements, facilities master plan. We've got to start a fund for that. We've got to find a way to finance the facilities master plan. I am aware of that, that clock is, you know, it's not stopping for us, and very soon, we're going to have that discussion. So those will be restricted dollars that this Board of Education decides on how to use them. You know, also, it's been very clear that our fund balance might push is 30%. So Mr. Grayford, we work with that, with Ms. Grant, 30%, we want to be stable. And last but not least, with the grants, that was a big challenge that we had as a district when I joined Proviso. We spent 88%. My goal was 92. I do want to leave a small carryover for the following year with all grants that allow carryover. So 88% was excellent work, thank you, Ms. Grayford, and your department in finance, you know, in making these things happen, and enjoying again and again with numbers that we're responsible fiscally, and that we continue to be, you know, a school district, you know, that shows its best effort for the community and for the students.
Thank you. And I just, I actually wanted to add one more thing to the $10 million bond piece. The district, at the end of last budget, we transferred $6 million out from operating into capital, this is another 10. This would essentially take out what was in 2008 emergency money, $16 million borrowed by the district, to put into operations to keep the district afloat. So in all, you know, since 2008 to 2017, essentially, what we've done with the passage of both of these resolutions, will have taken the emergency money that was borrowed back then and put them aside and put those into capital where they're needed, but also shown that there's a health, there's a wellness of financial stability in our operations that we're allowed, that we can do that and not need those funds anymore to back up the district. So, you know, it's a very positive piece.
Any other questions?
Thank you.
Thank you, Todd.
In November 2017, Provost Township High School District 2 and I received the following FOIA requests. Number one was November 2nd, 2017, Jacqueline Sessa requested copies and contract award information for the multimedia solution bid package and the assessment tool bid package. Information was provided. Number two was the November 23rd, 2017, Chichelli of Smart Cure requested purchase order number. If purchase orders are not used, a comparable substitute is acceptable, i.e. invoice, encumbrance, or check number, purchase date, line item details, detailed description of the purchase, line item quantity, line item price, vendor ID number, name, address, contact person, and an email address. Information will be provided. And the third one was on November 24th, 2017, Robert Props requested copies of the last RFP for garbage disposal services and most recent invoices for garbage disposal services. Information was provided. That concludes the FOIA report. Thank you. Concern agenda, are there any items the Board of Education would like to explore? From the concerned agenda, which contains the services? May I have a motion to approve the concerned agenda, minus 13B, 13D, 13E. So moved, second. Please call the board. Mr. Alessandar?
Aye.
Ms. Grant?
Aye.
Pedina?
Aye.
Mr. Patterson?
Mr. Dane.
Mr. Valteras?
Aye.
Mr. Wagner?
Aye.
Ms. Kelly? President Kelly?
Aye.
Motion carried. 13B, may I have a motion to approve the bill list slash payroll?
So moved.
Second, is there a second?
Second.
Is there any discussion? Discussion? 13B. Okay. Is there any discussion? Discussion. I got the wrong one.
The question is for Mr. Grayford. I noticed in the bill list, once again, there are several bills, January, February 2nd, 3rd, 2017, August, and I know we had talked about this before, and if my mind serves me correctly, that was going to be the last time that we're going to have bills that old coming before the board. It also appears that there are quite a few special education deals that were held for quite some time, and it's now coming before this new board, and I was just wondering, why is that?
I would, without having specifics, I mean, I can tell you the tuition, I'm sorry, I need the specific ahead of time to have someone go look and research, but on the special ed piece, we get all of those through PACE, and so it is all, it's dependent upon, and I know there's one, there's one where it comes to us that late, maybe due to their audit structure, and they go through an audit process, and once they close their books, they come back, I'd have to go in, you know, and, you're talking about the Hinsdale?
No, I'm not talking about the Hins. The Hins, it was clearly that that could have come before the board, because it looks like they sent you a letter stating that to go on and pay the bill, that was in October, so even if you brought it before November, I'm just talking about some of the maintenance bills that are old.
Yeah, I would have to go back and look and do, and have someone pull the invoices to find out what specifically the issue is. If you send me a list, we can, or send the superintendent a list, we can go through and research those and send those out to the board and get a response.
Research what, the late deals?
Well, as far as why, what was the delay in the payment, or if they were an outstanding piece, that service had been, you know, or payment had been held until something was completed, that happens a lot with some things, but I, without being able to go back and have someone pull the invoice and go look through and do the research, I wouldn't want to speculate on to the reasons as to why something was late. I mean, we do work to get everyone in, to push on bills, to get these paid, it's important to, you know, that we want to make sure vendors get paid in a timely manner, but also, at times, vendors have to get those to us in a timely manner, and there has to be sometimes a follow-up to make sure that all the work has been completed to our satisfaction before payment.
So we can take it up to a year?
I, again, without going through the detail, I wouldn't want to speculate exactly. Sometimes, yes, in construction pieces, I've seen, we'll have things out.
Well, these are not construction pieces.
Right, but I just, I don't know until I...
So I just want to, as a judiciary individual for this Board of Education, and I know how it has gone in the past with these bills, coming late, being paid a year later, it's just something that I know you stood there and you said that, you know, this was it, and here we are again with more bills, that's awful. And I have to go through every line and say, okay, this is what I'm talking about, and that's...
If you have some examples, if you have some examples, the superintendent, we'd be glad to go through those and get answers to the full board for you.
Yeah, the board should know.
So if you afford those, we can, we'll certainly come back with you quickly on that. and, and get answers to the full board for, for you, that, we, we.
Yeah, the board should know.
So if you, if you afford those, we can, we'll certainly come back with you quickly on that.
Could you, would you mind passing those down?
You got them on there. Yeah, everybody got them.
The second white on the.
Oh, sorry.
Are we talk, are there specific bills that you're talking about that are late?
Oh, there's several in here.
Do we have them highlighted so that we can give that to the administration and that's it? Because why would we order the whole?
Oh, you guys can pay them.
Think we should pay ourselves?
Yeah.
I mean, I understand. I understand none of it, if it don't, and I don't know, I'm saying we should pay a bill, but we're paying the bills, but then we're investigating that as a thing. I mean, that, it's just not what you do. I understand.
I, I wanna know.
It was promised, it was promised.
This was, that was it?
Yes, that was it. Several, one minute ago. So, just because, I mean, they're late, they were probably were promised they were not, nothing like this was gonna happen, I mean, we need.
Okay, what we would need is the names of, of the ones you would like to pull.
Board of Education, I am one vote. So, vote for the pay the bills, vote your conscience, that's all I can tell you. Let's, let's keep it professional, driven by its own. We have a finance committee. If you want these bills and this board to go to the finance committee, it can be discussed. I am not sure that they're late, so we gotta investigate each one of them, and we're willing to do that. We're willing to do the work for the Board of Education. As you know, you can send me those questions, and I will provide you with that information. And for the record, I am professional at all times. Thank you. My recommendation is that we take it to the finance committee, and we have that discussion as a professional thing, and we move the board forward.
Mr. Dreiford?
Mr. Alexander?
Aye.
Ms. Grant?
Aye.
Ms. Medina?
Aye.
Mr. Patterson?
Aye.
Mr. Valtierras?
Aye.
Mr. Wagner?
Aye.
President Kelly?
Aye.
Motion carried.
Number thirteen D. May I have a motion to approve policy manual updates, first reading?
So moved, second.
Is, is there any discussion?
No discussion, but ready to, uh, that first one.
Please call the board.
Mr. Alexander?
Aye.
Ms. Grant?
Aye.
Medina?
Aye.
Patterson?
Aye.
Mr. Valtierras?
Aye.
Mr. Wagner?
Aye.
President Kelly?
Aye.
Motion carried.
Number thirteen E. May I have a motion to approve policy manual updates, second reading?
So moved, second.
Discussion? Yes. Uh, I would like to say something, uh, regarding nepotism policy, uh, on its final debut. I feel that hiring the best and most qualified candidate should always be the main focus for this, for the, for our district. I have seen, and I'm true, I am totally against unqualified people being hired, uh, here. I am, so I want to make that clear for the record. Uh, if the person is qualified, I have no problem with that. Uh, we have people who have worked campaigns for people, and then they end up with a job here, and they are unqualified. We have had a person's wife receive a job here, and that person was not qualified. Um, I just wanna state it, uh, and then sometimes we've had someone's friend or, uh, someone's, um, relative, and they have not been qualified. So I want you to really understand where I'm coming from, uh, in regards to this. While I understand the purpose of the stricter policy, I also do not want to hinder future candidates and have our district miss out on people who can make a strong, positive impact on our district and students. Now, with that said, I would like to know, how would one know who is truly related to someone? How do we qualify that? He say, she say, word of mouth, DNA test? How do we really know who is related to who? I believe you have to be cautious with this, uh, with this policy. If one is denied employment because of speculation of being related to a board member, it could cause, it, it, uh, could that result in legal action? Uh, that could, uh, result in legal action against the district. Now, one thing I do appreciate is the desire and passion of this board to see where we can improve and put it on the table. The differences of opinion and challenges that are present to each other only make a stronger board. Any other discussion? Please call the board.
Well, I guess I, I was sort of, if I could.
Sure.
Yeah, um, thank you, President Kelly. Um, I think your, your comments are well taken, and, um, thank you for acknowledging, you know, um, the, the place, you know, where the, this, uh, policy was born, practically was born out of, was born out of a passion, uh, for District Two oh nine to be the best school district. I mean, really, it, it, this, this should be the best school, this, this is the best school district in like, in, in the, in the world. I, you know, everywhere I go, I see these, these kids, and they're amazing kids. I meet their parents, and they're just absolutely wonderful people. When I moved into Proviso Township, you know, it was on a three-year arm, you know, just only, you know, with like a eighty, ten, ten mortgage. You know, it was like, we weren't gonna stay, right? I, you know, I came from Chicago, I wasn't intending to set down roots. And then, all of a sudden, I met all these people. I wasn't expecting to make friends, you know? And all of a sudden, I wasn't just making friends, I was meeting like soulmates. I was becoming a part of a community that was so engaged that I was, it, it took me to places I never dreamed of, like sitting at this table. Never in a million years that I think I was gonna get a clipboard and knock on people's doors and say, vote for me, and vote to refer Teresa Kelly, Claudia Medina, Roddy Alexander, and said, and it, so I guess, I have seen, um, what nepotism and cronyism can do. And I think that, in the long run, it lowers accountability, it, it, it lowers performance, and so I think that this policy is very important. And, um, and obviously, you have a well-protected question.
I'm, I'm very proud of the work that was done by the Policy Committee in regards to nepotism and cronyism. I think that this district was destroyed by, um, previous practices. And I think that the effort that this board has brought forward to ensure transformation, to ensure that there is a new day in Proviso, that Proviso is one Proviso, no longer silo education, no longer, um, ruled by political preferences, or friends, or contracts. But it, but Proviso has a new ethical role, and I am very grateful for the work that every single board member has done to bring forward ethics, transparency. And I think that this will bring us to a new level. High-functioning districts have strong nepotism policies, and the vision brought forth by the Policy Committee with research, with, um, the leadership, will bring us to a new day in Proviso and make sure that we never go back, because, uh, nobody wants to go back to the way it was. And I am proud of the way that everybody's worked together to ensure that we have a very strong policy that will keep us on the right track moving forward. Thank you for everybody's work.
Any other discussion? Mr. Alexander?
I might as well say something, I'm over your crack now. Um, I, I first wanna thank Mr. Wagner for his bravery in doing this. Listen, for, change is hard. We, we have some more uncomfortable conversations to have at this board table than they must be had. So I wanna thank Mr. Wagner for starting the roll and getting us ahead in the right direction. Change is hard, and, you know, a lot of people are uncomfortable. Uh, a, a lot of people in this building is west, and, uh, PMSA have been, you know, adversely affected. A lot of people have benefited from the, the sins in the past, and that's the past. But I think to move forward with this board, we must set a standard. We must set a standard, not looking back and worrying about the past history, because we're not gonna do that. But we, we set a standard to assure the public that they don't have to worry about us doing that. So, you know, we buy into the policy, there's some other issues, but the policy's vague, the policy's ambiguous, the policy leaves the perception of, uh, anything from the past, and we've exposed ourselves and created a climate that keeps us, uh, keeps us kinda stagnant. But I, 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 I respect you, Madam President, I respect your, your, your thoughts, you've been there the longest. But I, I totally understand where you're coming from, I just, in this instance, see it a little bit differently and think that for this board being so new, we need to change a hundred and eighty degrees from what we've done. Uh, you're right, the policy we have on the books is strong. I agree with you. We just need it stronger. We just need it stronger.
Any other discussion? Uh, hearing none. Is there anything else, anyone like to close from their group, to discuss?
Yes, um, just the, uh, the public participation at Board of Education meetings and petition, uh, for the three minutes. With the board and were, I mean, I, I understand that there was, it needed to be changed, but I think three minutes, it, it's good enough for some people. You know, it's good enough for some people, but if we're a board that wants to listen to this community, we need to give them a little more time, maybe four minutes, I don't know, I'm just saying.
I mean, that.
I don't know, something, figure out something, I don't know, how do we figure out three? I mean, three sometime, if I'm able to compile something and, you know, and, 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 and try to compress it, maybe I could get it out in four minutes. But I was just wondering, how would we solve it?
Ms. Grant? I, I would just like to add that the three minutes, I think, is, is sufficient. I think, um, it's important to realize that public comment is the start of a dialogue. It's not the end of it. It's not limited to those three minutes, it's the start of discussion. Um, a lot of things we see, um, uh, maybe don't need any follow-up, maybe we say thank you and we move on, but a lot of things do, and we've seen it just in the short term that we've been here, people have brought concerns to us, and we've implemented changes based on those concerns. It's the start of a dialogue. So I think we need to be really careful about what we allow in the meeting, and it is the Board of Education meeting. And to keep it the Board of Education meeting, um, but to realize that, you know, the work we do outside of these meetings with, um, our constituents, with parents, with the students, with the administration and staff, is just as important. So I don't, I don't wanna get caught up to think that we're limited to those three minutes, but to see it as the start of a dialogue and a continuing discussion.
And there is a discretion that the, for the president to extend it, you know, specifically five minutes.
Yeah, if, if, if I could, we, we have thirty days, I believe, almost between this meeting and the next, in which people can address the board in various ways, through committees and things of that nature. So this isn't the only place, we have to be considerate of the public's time, uh, in the business that must be taken place, that is mandated, or that we do once a month. So there are opportunities that the district and the board gives the public, uh, throughout that monthly period where our R and B bills are on, are on the website. So there are ways to address and send concerns to both the administration and to the board, aside from the official business meeting. So I, I think the time is appropriate, you know, for what we're trying to do, like Amanda said.
Any other discussion?
If I may, I think that in, in understanding what Sam was saying, I think we need to also be careful that the previous board did use it as a way of not having the ability for people to address the board, and it's been used before to silence people. So, um, sometimes we do, I, I'm glad that we have the flexibility now, but if it's policy, three minutes, and we get to a very stern board, um, and somebody really needs to discuss something, I just think that three minutes can be brief at times.
Can I say one more thing? I say this with experience and dilemma, I understand. I've been in other board districts where I felt that, that I was not being listened to.
Right.
And that's what that comes from. I mean, board at the board meeting, I was there, there, commenting, commenting, and I really, I never got anywhere. So, I mean, Dr. Lee, this community has board, that has board members that will respond to them.
But not everyone.
Yeah, but, I mean, we, we have to think about future board members.
Mr. Alexander?
Aye.
Ms. Grant?
Aye.
Ms. Medina?
Aye.
Ms. Patterson?
Aye.
Mr. Valtierras?
Aye.
Mr. Wagner?
Aye.
President Kelly?
Aye.
Motion carried.
May I have a motion for, uh, number fourteen A, SAT test preparation student program?
So moved.
Second.
Discussion? Hearing none, please call the board.
Mr. Alexander?
Aye.
Ms. Grant?
Aye.
Medina? Patterson?
Aye.
Mr. Valtierras?
Aye.
Ms. Wagner? Mr. Wagner?
Aye.
President Kelly?
Aye.
Motion carried.
Fourteen B. Manual motion to approve the contract for Think First training.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion?
I'm excited about this.
Please call the board.
It's very cool. All right. Um, Mr. Alexander?
Aye.
Ms. Grant?
Aye.
Ms. Medina? Ms. Patterson?
Aye.
Mr. Valtierras?
Aye.
Mr. Wagner?
Aye.
President Kelly?
Aye.
Motion carried.
May I have a motion, uh, number fifteen. May I have a motion to approve a superintendent's evaluation as discussed in closed session?
So moved.
Second.
Discussion? Please call the board.
Mr. Alexander?
Aye.
Ms. Grant?
Aye.
Ms. Medina?
Aye.
Ms. Patterson?
Aye.
Mr. Valtierras?
Aye.
Mr. Wagner?
Aye.
President Kelly?
Aye.
Motion carried.
Number sixteen. Manual motion to approve the resolution providing for payment of a portion of the outstanding general obligation limited tax refund, refunding bonds, series two zero zero eight A of the district.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion? This is really great. Please call the board.
Discussion. Mr. Wagner?
Aye.
Mr. Valtierras?
Aye.
Ms. Patterson?
Aye.
Ms. Medina? Aye. Ms. Grant?
Aye.
Mr. Alexander?
Aye.
President Kelly?
Aye.
Motion carried.
Number seventeen. May I have a motion to approve the resolution providing for the issue of not to exceed ten million dollars general obligation limited tax school bond of the district for the purpose of increasing the working cash fund of said school district, providing for the levy of a direct annual tax, to pay the principal and interest on said bonds and authorizing the sale of the bonds to the purchaser thereof.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion?
I would, I would like to just thank Amanda and the committee, and especially you, Mr. Dreiford. And for the record, I just want to state this clear. And for the record, I just want to state this clearly, that what they have done is saved the district $2 million. So for those of you that don't know, understand what we're doing up here with this, with the work that they've done, we have saved the district $2 million in interest. I just wanted to make my statement.
I made the motion. We have a motion.
You said discussion.
Yeah, that's not the type of discussion.
Sorry. Okay.
That should be under the business?
Gotcha. Yes, ma'am.
Is there any other discussion? Please call the roll.
Mr. Wagner?
Aye.
Mr. Arqueros?
Aye.
Ms. Patterson?
Upstayed.
Ms. Medina?
Aye.
Ms. Grant?
Aye.
Mr. Alexander?
Aye.
Ms. Kelly?
Aye.
Motion carried.
Number 18, may I have a motion to approve the teachers' contracts as discussed in closed session?
So moved.
Second.
Discussion? Please call the roll.
Mr. Wagner?
Aye.
Mr. Arqueros?
Aye.
Ms. Patterson?
Aye.
Ms. Medina?
Aye.
Ms. Grant?
Aye.
Mr. Alexander?
Aye.
Ms. Kelly?
Aye.
Motion carried.
Number 19, may I have a motion to approve student discipline as discussed in closed session?
So moved.
Second.
Discussion? Please call the roll.
Mr. Wagner?
Aye.
Mr. Arqueros?
Aye.
Ms. Patterson?
Aye.
Ms. Medina?
Aye.
Ms. Grant?
Aye.
Mr. Alexander?
Aye.
Ms. Kelly?
Aye.
Motion carried.
Number 20, old business committee reports, are there any?
Yes, if I can start with those, President Kelly?
Sure.
First of all, with our business, I'd like to say thanks to the teachers' union represented here by Scott Henderson for the excellent work with the contract. Congratulations, a board board, yes. So thank you for the excellent work. Our union president is not here today, but she's attending some family matters. So please say to her that we appreciate the work as well.
Thank you, Dr. Rodriguez, we appreciate it.
Yeah, then the other item that we have here from the administration on old business is this idea of the student appearance, uniform. There has been a lot of discussion on this. And school leaders, teachers, students, I mean, this topic is a very, very hot topic and it has been handled with so much professionalism. So we do have Dan Johnson and Cynthia Moreno who were able to talk to a student leader from Chicago at the Perkins Well offices. We also had a visit to Proviso East and Ned Wagner, Ms. Medina, so you know, came and joined us in having conversations with students in this Abilas class, a class about anti-bias, anti-racist, and all of those isms that we have, where the students are really coming together, looking at policies, looking at the handbook, I mean, and doing some phenomenal work. So this idea about the dress code is one of the ideas and sort of the word that they have tackled during that class. In PMSA, we have the same discussions as Proviso West. So we just want to give you an update on this because this is work that we want to take on, you know, January, maybe through policy, you know, if we have that opportunity with Mr. Wagner and the board. And it's also an interest of the Board of Education. I mean, we have had these discussions before. So we are, just want you to know that we began the conversation, we have some feedback for you. Mr. Wagner might have some other feedback based on our visit. And we just want to make sure that we work with our students, listen to our students, our teachers, and see whether or not this policy is serving us. And there's plenty of evidence that might suggest that we might need to change. So Mr. Johnson and Ms. Moreno?
All right, good evening.
Good evening.
So Mr. Johnson and I would like to talk to you about an opportunity that we had to work with our wonderful proviso students. On Monday, November 13th, Mr. Johnson, myself, and Ms. Rayburn, along with 13 students who are part of the superintendent's student advisory board right at the offices of Perkins and Well, which are located in Chicago in the Wrigley Building, students toured the facility and had the opportunity to talk with staff from Perkins and Well. The main focus of the visit was to provide an opportunity for students to engage with the topic of student uniform policy and to provide their input regarding that policy.
So as a reminder for everyone, beginning with the 2014-2015 school year, all students were required to wear the prescribed school uniform. But as Dr. Rodriguez has said, in answer to some questions or concerns that were being expressed by students and staff, the students sought the input of the students on the advisory council. So as we engaged with the students, we found them to be extremely thoughtful, they participated in the discussion, and we actually had some of the students have to argue the position construct to how they felt about it and they did an exceptional job of doing that as well. So completely engaged. As a matter of fact, given the opportunity to discuss what an ideal policy might look like, some of the students were way more conservative about it than we might have thought, but they were very reasonable and measured about what they were recommending. But some of the key takeaways that we got from them was that they understand that there's a need for a dress code and restricting representation of gangs, drugs, and sexually explicit themes in the school. They would prefer the freedom to express themselves appropriately through their choice of clothing, that's a recurring theme. They kept coming back to the idea or theme of unity, but in the sense that all students being able to express themselves and not so much everybody wearing the same uniform and looking alike necessarily. And they expressed concerns regarding just the consistency of fairness of how the policy's enforced and even whether it can be.
So at the end of the meeting, we asked the students for some feedback regarding, you know, the meeting. So some of the statements included, "Today I felt like I had a voice, not just for myself, but for the entire PMSA student body. It opened my eyes to a different side of an issue that I wasn't aware of concerning uniforms. I feel like we're getting somewhere as a unit, as one proviso. I really appreciate this opportunity." Another student's statement includes, "I think that this is an absolutely wonderful opportunity that has been given to us. Everyone is able to come together and be unified and show the actual one proviso spirit we need. I've absolutely enjoyed this opportunity and can't wait to do and be part of so much more." So that was how we were going to, you know, wrap up the meeting, but one student from Proviso East actually stopped us and said that we couldn't leave the room until we all got up and got into a circle and in one word described how we all felt. And she said that the reason for that is because this meeting was initiated by Dr. Rodriguez and if he had been there, he would have really appreciated the students' comments. So with that being said, Dr. Rodriguez can talk about the next steps regarding the review of this policy.
So Vanessa, steps on this will be to invite some students and teachers to the policy committee and then bring something to the board. Some ideas, there's no promises, the Board of Education decides, but some ideas on how we can listen to our students and work in a democratic way, you know, with the best thinking of our students and teachers for the dress code.
So, thank you. So, yeah, we went to this ambulance class and not only was I impressed with all the work that these students have done, research, and anticipating potential issues that could come up, like, you know, if you gave a reform policy, one of the things that could come up. I was so impressed with the sophistication of the language that they want in this policy, right? They want us to identify these sort of unconscious biases in our language, you know, all this sort of unconscious sexist, racist, classist language that we just use without thinking. And it was mind blowing. And the other piece of it that was stunning, it was just a really stunning example of the power of competency-based learning. They were in the furniture, they had new furniture, they were in their own pods, they had five groups, they had their laptops, they had PowerPoints. Not only were they collaborating from these five groups, but that each class, you know, first period, third period, they would build on the work that the other classes had been doing. So they were communicating, you know, what they call it, it's not asymmetrical, but it's like asynchronous. I mean, it was really sophisticated. So a couple of these students are going to be coming to the next policy committee meeting, which is tomorrow at 4:30. They're going to present and they're going to draft, or they might even be bringing a draft of a policy, I don't know, something might come before for first reading in January. So, but they're totally, it was brilliant.
I also had the opportunity of visiting Dr. Hardy in his office with Mr. Alexander one time, a couple months ago. And this same group of John, men and women were presenting to the principal and it was a great visit as well. So I think honestly, I mean, this group of students along with the student advisory has spent a lot more time looking at this policy than the time that it was spent when the policy was implemented. I really think with all the respect of the Board of Education, these students have spent a lot of time, they're risk takers, they're communicating, they're inquiring. It's just unbelievable, the type of work that they're doing. And we just want to say thanks to school principals and also Ms. Moreno, Mr. Johnson, and everybody for helping us in working this challenge. This is a challenge, we're going to have discussion and we look forward to a great resolution when it comes to this policy.
Is there any other questions or would anyone like to say anything in regards to the 209 policy, student uniform discussion?
If I could, Madam President, I just hope the students are up to the task. When they come before, then I'm sure they will be. I just really, you know, I'm often floored, I spend, you know, a lot of time and I'm privileged to spend a lot of time and walk with Dr. Rodriguez and be in schools and different events and different meetings and Dr. Dula is doing a great job at West with the transformation team. I was fortunate to be able to attend some things there and attend her things on Saturday and see the parents and tutoring on Saturday with their children at Panther University and all these things that are naysaid about the stereotypical proviso students and to sit at the tables with these students and listen to them think I was sitting with a young lady last Saturday and I think this was Monday, I forget, I was there Saturday and Monday, but I thought she was a senior and she was only a junior. She was very well spoken and we're sitting there coming up with different solutions and stuff to the issues and things that we're trying to build upon in Proviso West. Incredible. And Dr. Hardy, I would say this even if he was an alpha, he's doing incredible work. He's doing, he don't know what that means. He's doing incredible work, he's just doing incredible work. And I had a chance to sit in that class with Dr. Rodriguez and when you, if you guys get to go with Dr. Rodriguez, he doesn't tell you where he's going, he just says, "Come on, let's go here." And I don't know where I'm going or whatever, but I have the time to go there and the next thing you know, we're sitting in Dr. Hardy's office and we're in front of these students. And they're putting on these presentations and their PowerPoints and they're presenting these thought-out positions and stuff and it was relative to the handbook and issues that they were having with the handbook. But it wasn't the issues with the handbook that was so important, I saw the learning process of them being able to advocate for themselves and most importantly, be civic-minded. Civic-minded, to know how to present ideas and present their plans and put these things together. And we were hitting them. Dr. Hardy was hitting them and we were hitting them and they're up there and they're nervous when we're giving it to them. And they're standing their ground, so it's some really great work and I look forward to that uniform policy discussion, I really do. But yeah, I just wanted to say thank you to the principals and the administration for pushing our students and, you know, we get the grades, we get the SAT tests and stuff like that, but the thinking stuff, you know, how does life work? You know, how do you get a discount on that shirt when it's got a hole in it when you go into the store? Can you talk to the manager with some sense to get that discount? That type of stuff, can you advocate for policy in your community? Can you organize? You know, those types of things and skills are being taught now and being able to see that's great. So I just wanted to say thanks to you for that.
Any other? Anyone else? Do you have a deal?
I'd like to speak on a different committee since we're talking about committees.
Committee?
Yeah, another committee.
Anyone else on the student parents' uniform, student uniform? Hearing none.
Dr. Howard, if you wouldn't mind coming up? I really want to thank Dr. Howard because there's been a lot of work done for the SASE committee, a lot of collaboration, and we put out some pretty incredible and interesting surveys that came out from students and from parents in regards to the new programs. And perhaps, if you don't mind speaking to it for just a moment, some of our findings.
Sure, I'll be very, very brief.
Very brief.
We administered a student and a parent survey regarding summer school programming and we got a pretty decent response rate. And overall, parents and students sort of indicated they're interested in credit acceleration courses being offered over the summer. They want to have fun during summer school, they want more time to participate in activities outdoors. They're also interested in taking courses that'll better prepare them for advanced placement and for their IB programs here at PMSA.
And dual credit.
And definitely dual credit. They really want to explore the early college credit and look into early graduation offerings. They had a lot of good suggestions on how we can sort of improve the offer during the summertime as far as what's happening in actual classrooms. And so the committee was able to look at that information and sort of analyze it and we organized it in buckets of work that are really going to allow like our school-based staff to develop a really strong program for next summer.
I think it was really interesting too to see that when we were looking at what our students were doing over the summer, they were staying at home, hanging around in the greatest number.
The majority of students said they do nothing over the summer.
But they really want to do something. They want to be engaged. Like we really saw a number of avenues in which they want engagement with us, which was very exciting.
Absolutely. We got a lot of really good community feedback during committee meetings as well.
Thank you so much for all your hard work.
Sure. Thank you.
Yeah, I just want to say that we started our first facilities committee last week on Thursday and we have our second one tomorrow, Thursday at 4 o'clock at PMSA. And a lot of us may say, well, what is facilities? You know, I mean, what facilities is this? If it wasn't for facilities, we wouldn't be sitting here, sitting here comfortably, drinking water, talking in the microphones, everything's working, projected working, all of that is part of the school. So it's very important that when you come to work, you show up to work, everything's working, the air's working nice and the building that you're going into looks welcoming. And that's what facilities is. We want you to come out and be part of the facilities committee and give us ideas, you know, you need to paint the fence, the parking lot's dirty, we need to improve the image of Proviso East and Proviso West and PMSA. There's a lot to do here. We know we got a massive facilities plan coming up, but there's a lot that we could do as a committee, so we could pass this over to the massive facilities architectures, which are Perkins and Well. So without the facilities, we have no school, we have nothing. So remember, facilities is important. It all goes together, it's part of the synergy that makes the school system work. So come on, I invite you to come out on Thursday, 4 o'clock, we'll be there at PMSA on the fifth floor. Thank you.
Any other committee reports?
Two minutes.
Two minutes.
Just two minutes. I have to correct Dr. Rodriguez during his presentation, the first meeting was correct, we only had about 10 parents and administrators come out, but at the last parent and community engagement, remember, we had 35. We have a total of 47 emails now from volunteers that are going to help us to engage the parents with the parent coordinators, the community schools, and to get better and more efficient parent engagement in the education of the parents. I want to thank the board members that came out to support. I want to thank Dr. Rodriguez, of course, for his awesome support, but my man Dan Johnson, Dan, he takes good care of me, helps me out, and we've been doing this longer than I've been a board member. But the meetings have been successful, we're going to be breaking up into subcommittees, spread the word. There is no mandatory meeting, we're doing a meeting to help parents to assist their children in the learning process. And when we say things like empowering parents, people really need to look at the definition And when we say things like empowering parents, people really need to look at the definition of that word empower and see what it means, because it's more than just a notion we give someone power to do something, we also give them responsibility, accountability, all right? So that's what we're trying to do, in the truest sense of the word. And I told Madam President, failure's not an option, so we're going to keep pushing. Everyone's more than welcome to come out and participate. The next meeting date hasn't been determined because of the holidays, but will be shortly, it'll be on the district website.
Hearing none, we'll go to number twenty-one, new business registration procedures for year nineteen.
And this is just an update, Mr. Johnson, please. At the request of some board members, especially a board member, Martinez, we, we started to, to analyze and examine this idea of streamlining the registration process, where we have online as an option, I mean, and we want to set an administration's committee to really look at this, the way in which we do business relative to registration. So the administration has been very, very active on this, and Mr. Johnson has a quick update, so that you are aware that we're talking back to you with a formal proposal, as this information from you, you know, was very important, and, and the administration has been, you know, working on it since we had the discussion of Johnson.
So, we want to make sure we provide our students and parents with an efficient and customer-friendly registration process, there is all kinds of room for improvement in it. We have basically two groups of students that we need to address, we have our incoming freshmen and our students who are new to the district, who are going through an enrollment process, and then we also have our returning students. And so we're forming a planning committee that's going to look at all the ways that that process can be streamlined for both returning and for new students, with a focus on eliminating anything that doesn't need to be part of that process that might be causing some drag on it and, and prolonging it and making more painful for everybody, and not returning us information that we absolutely need. So we're going to be looking to get the minimal approach to what is needed to register a student on a year-to-year basis, still protecting the interests of the district and making sure that we get all the information that we need to operate, using or leveraging the use of technology. We're going to reduce the number of forms, there's twenty pieces of paper in this year's registration packet, I'm sure that some of that stuff could have come out of there, and focusing on the entire process and looking at customer service and convenience. So we will be working on that and putting the plan together to try to create a better process for the entire school, community, parents, students, and staff included.
In asking questions, oftentimes the answer is, "We totally did that." I mean, I put why, and there's no answer. So we're going to make sure that we maintain what we need, and if it's not needed, why put it there? So, I mean, let's streamline the process, and we're going to investigate and see what other school districts do as well. I believe, just from what I saw, that there is a lot of work that we can do to make it better.
May I have a motion to adjourn?
So moved. Second.
Paul Stater?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion carried.